Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 Tumwater City Council meeting. We will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
And Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I am here. Join me in our salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so before we go to special items, I just wanted to make a slight adjustment to our agenda on seven B and C on council considerations. We're reversing those. So the ordinance will go first, and then we will do the quarterly financial update second. So with that, we will go ahead and do the proclamation for a week without driving, September 29th to October 5th, and Councilmember Von Holtz will be reading it.
Whereas the week without driving was established in 2021 in Washington State by the Disability Mobility Initiative of Disability Rights Washington. So those who have the option to drive can learn firsthand about barriers and challenges that non-drivers face, and whereas mobility is a fundamental part of health, safety, and community connection, and whereas non-drivers include aging adults, youth, students, low-income individuals, people with physical, mental, intellectual, or developmental disabilities, and people who prefer not to drive. And whereas a third of the people residing in Washington State do not have a driver's license. And whereas the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics estimates that the cost of owning a car is approximately 72 cents per mile, with average household spending of $10,961 a year in 2021, and whereas improvements in walking and bike paths in Tumwater improves mobility for residents who cannot or do not drive to get around to visit family and friends and take care of everyday tasks. And whereas transportation represents the second-largest greenhouse gas emissions source in Thurston County, which we must reduce to meet our city, region, and state greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. And whereas going a week without driving provides an opportunity to gain lived experience to understand how we can meet the needs of all Tumwater residents. Now, therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tumwater, does hereby proclaim September 29th through October 5th, 2025, "Week Without Driving," and encourages all people in the City of Tumwater to participate in the Week Without Driving, inclusive of our walking audit on September 30th, 2025.
Thank you. Alyssa, would you like to introduce? I think there's several groups that are here this evening. And so go ahead and introduce who will be accepting the proclamation.
People's First Washington, Thurston County Chapter will be receiving the proclamation, but we also have Resident Patty who would like to speak as well. So we have a variety of speakers who are aware of the 15-minute time limit who would like to speak to the Week Without Driving.
Great.
By all means. Come on up and decide who.
Sure. Patty.
My name is Patty Clark. Thank you for having me. Most of you have been blessed to arrive here tonight by your own power, while some could not. Some of our guests had to be brought here by other people, by loved ones, by bus, by drivers, or by whomever they could convince to bring them. Some people are not here but wanted to be because they could not get a ride, not catch a bus, or were not near a bus that stopped where they could get on it. I want to thank you. I want you to think about this for a moment. How would this make you feel if you were in this position? If you couldn't catch a bus, if you couldn't get a ride, if you couldn't find anyone that would give you the time of day to take you somewhere, and you didn't have the ability to drive a car to get to the place you wanted to go or to be somewhere you wanted to be? I know you most likely don't want to put yourself in that position. You don't want to be disabled. You don't want to be old. You don't want to not be able to drive. None of us do. We all want to be the way we are now if we don't have a disability. If we don't, if we're not old, which I am, but I still drive. I can still walk. I can still do all these things. But my husband, Lauren, he can't. He's got multiple sclerosis. And it's taken the ability to walk away. It's taken a lot of things away for him. And so he isn't able to get in the car and drive away like he used to be able to do when he was younger. My neighbor that lives next door to me, she can walk. She can do her lawn. She can do lots of things, but she can't drive because she broke her back several years ago. So whenever she needs to go someplace, I just tell her, "Give me a call. I'll take her anywhere she needs to go." But I'm retired. I've got lots of time, and I love to drive. But that's because I love to help people. That's just the kind of person I am. It doesn't take anything for me to jump in my van and run her somewhere. It doesn't really take anything for me to load my husband up and take him somewhere, doctor's visits, things like that. Yeah, it's kind of hard on me sometimes. But life's hard sometimes. You've got to do these things, or at least I do. But not everybody's like that. Not everybody just wants to take people places and do things for them. A lot of people are very blessed. They have the resources. They have the car. They have the time. They can do these things. But you know what? There's a lot of people out there that have the time, that have the vehicle. They don't want to do these things. They'd rather be home doing their own thing or out fishing or out doing whatever they like to do. All of us have neighbors. All of us have people we know. And you know what? All of us could be helping people. Now, I'm not going to tell you to get out there and do that, but I am going to tell you that you should. I am going to tell you that every one of us could be out there helping somebody else. You don't have to help everybody, but you can help somebody. You can help somebody near you. You can reach out to somebody and do something for them. You can be kind. You can be thoughtful. You can be helpful. You can look for the people around you that need you to help them, and you should. I'm not going to tell you you have to, but you should. It's how we should treat people. It's how we should treat them all the time. It doesn't matter if they're just like you or not. It's what we should be doing for each other. We'd live in a whole lot better place if we did. I believe that those who don't have anyone with disabilities around just don't think about what our disabled friends and neighbors have to go through on a daily basis. I truly believe that. If you're not around somebody that's disabled, you don't realize it. But you need to. You need to feel, you need to think about what their life might be like. You need to, you need to think how you might be able to help them. Because you know what? We're all really blessed. We really are. If you don't have a disability, you really do have it made. You might think that you're, you've got problems. And you might have problems. We all do. But people with disabilities, they've got it really hard. I live with one. And he does. He has a hard time. And sometimes I get fed up with it, just like anybody else. But most of the time, I've got it a whole lot easier than he does. And I'm not trying to make y'all feel bad. That's not what I'm here for. What I'm here for is to say, we need to take a look at the life we have and realize that we can help somebody else. We can't just go along thinking that woe is me. We have to realize that we have it really good, and we need to help other people. So when you see somebody that's disabled, heck, when you see anybody, but when you see somebody that's disabled, smile at them, would you? Let them know that they're important too. Ask if you can help them. If you've got a couple minutes, if there's anything you can do for them. Say hi. Ask them how they're doing, and mean it. Talk to them, if even just for a minute or two. Let them know that they're human too. Help them feel heard and included. Just show them a little love. And remember that we're all on this earth together. They're people too. Thank you.
Come on up. We have a couple other speakers for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you all for doing this.
Thank you all for choosing us to accept this. Thank you, the proclamation. Thanks.
I will, I will try to be as brief as our information officer, Michael, over here. We feel quite lucky to live in a city and/or in a county that is so accessible. It could be a lot worse, and I think a lot of us are feeling inspired that folks are willing to consider what it might be like to not drive even for just a week. I think most of us took the bus and/or gave other people a ride here. So that's the real thing. I mean, from, from what I've heard, for the most part, we all do feel pretty lucky. You know, the bus gets us around, and it's free. So, you know, it could be a lot worse. So just thank you for taking the time. And then People First of Washington, we are a group of self-advocates. So if you know anyone who's interested, we like to advocate, educate, and also celebrate. We mostly celebrate, full disclosure. So if you know anyone who's interested, please send them our way, and thank you.
Great. So here is the proclamation, and I saw a multitude of people here. Can you, if you all want to come up, that would be great, and I hope I have enough. So on proclamations and those kinds of special recognition, I give a special pin. And so I want to make sure that everyone gets a special pin. So... There you go. Okay. And if you want to come this way, we can take a picture and then post it. Great. Thank you, and thank you for coming this evening and spreading your message. It's really, really, really important, and I'm glad you came this evening. So thank you. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead and, go ahead and send us a message, and we will get that passed out.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Shall we file out before we make too much of a scene?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And you got a pen, right? All right. Thank you very, very much. The next item on our special items is Green Team 2024 Annual Report. And I think Alyssa Jones-Wood will be doing the presentation.
Yes, thank you. So I placed a packet on, in front of each of your seats this evening, and I put it in a weird order, where flyer for the bike event, the bike tune-up, and the walk order at back, even though that was the first item. So I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that. And yes, so I'm here to talk to you briefly about the Green Team Annual Report, which is an online dashboard, but since I only have a clicker, I'm going to show you the static version, but it should be on the website here any day now. In the past, I've presented you with a very long document with lots of bar charts and pie charts. And I heard that dashboards were more in style. So I tried to make it a more accessible, beautiful, memorable experience for us to present our annual city operations-related sustainability data. So this is the first page that you see, but this is a snipper, a snapshot of the website. So beautiful. The next tab, which is, you can see introduction, fleet vehicles, all that stuff up on the top. If it was a real website, I click on it, but the next slide is the next tab. Some information about our city fleet vehicles. We have a purchasing policy here at the city that light-duty vehicles are replaced with electric or hybrid vehicles unless there's a really, really, really good reason why. And we have a whole kind of schedule of those vehicle replacements and what they'll be replaced with that the Green Team looks at every year. So just some type information up there. We also, this year, transitioned our underground diesel storage tanks for our fleet vehicles to renewable diesel. So now all of our diesel vehicles are running on renewable diesel, which is a reduced greenhouse gas emission, which is great. We have a pie chart there of the fuel types that were consumed in 2024, gasoline being about 74%. The green part, which I can't read from here, is diesel, and then renewable diesel, because that was kind of October, November of 2024. So a couple months, but not a whole year. The fun line chart is our fossil fuel consumption, which you can see started higher in the baseline year and has been going down. And the renewable diesel is helpful for that. We have this bar chart, which is hard for me to see from here, but that's the kind of vehicles in our fleet over years. So you can see the purple is electric vehicles growing over time, and then the total number of vehicles also growing over time. And then the dollar figure at the bottom is the average electricity cost for both our fleet and public EV charging. So on an average, each session of our fleet vehicles and the public or employees plugging into any of the charging stations that we have at our city facilities is about a buck fifty, so very affordable for refueling. The next tab is water consumption. The little text box up there just reminds us that we use reclaimed water at the golf course for all irrigation, and the bar chart next to it is potable water versus reclaimed water. And you can see on 2024, it's about equal. Actually, most years it's almost equal in terms of the amount of water that we use to irrigate the golf course and the amount of water that we use for all other city operations. So it's really cool that we're using reclaimed water for that. Otherwise, we'd be using a lot more very energy-intensive potable water for something that does not need potable water. The pie chart is what we use our potable water for, which is mostly parks and building landscaping, then indoor water right-of-way in Brewery Park. We pay the water bill for Brewery Park, but it's not our park, so it has its own little part of the pie. And then we have our total potable water consumption. 2023 was super high. We're doing better this year, but the very low part there is our goal. So we're still working on it, but not there yet. All right. Buildings, energy. The first one on the top left is our solar production. In 2023, we added some more solar panels on city operations, so that's why I went from smaller to bigger. Electricity consumption is below it, with the very bottom bar being our goal. We're still exceeding it, but we're getting better, making improvements every day. There's a Zoom people over the golf course bar, if you would, moving that a little bit just for a second melody, because it's high, and I want to highlight that. That's our natural gas consumption of city facilities. You can see the golf course is the highest. We pay the, the natural gas bill for the restaurant, and we have some projects to work on in terms of reconnecting outdoor air so that they're not using the stoves to heat the space. City Hall, second-highest natural gas, and then lower but still present and still emitting carbon dioxide from our city operations for our other facilities. These are much more fun to click on in the live thing. It shows you the number, and you can see it. Waste production, almost last one. We have a goal, and we have far exceeded that goal. I will note that this is, this is kind of not perfect because we haven't been able to do a full waste audit. This is an estimate based on the collection container and frequency of pickup and adding different services and how much that means that we were diverting. We are diverting about 50% from the landfill, from city operations, which is awesome. It's higher than a lot of people. So we're doing well on waste production, as best as we know, because waste audits cost a lot of money, and we seem to be doing good. So investing in the things that we need to make the most changes in. The last one is some new data that hasn't been included in the Green Team report in the past, but we just finished the canopy assessment, and it is something that the city does own and maintain for our tree canopy, at least our portion on city-owned properties. This is a citywide tree canopy. We have our goal, which is very high compared to where we are now, but tree canopies fluctuate with development and replanting. And I have more detailed charts on this if you would like to know more information about the tree canopy. But that's where we are in terms of tree canopy. And some suggested actions to keep us going in the right direction. Implement the fleet electrification memo and adopt the goals developed within it, which relate to the percentage of our fleet to be electrified, police and non-police, as well as a reduction in gasoline consumption, period. Implement the projects identified in the investment-grade audit of city facilities. We have a number of projects that will be part of the CFP, Capital Facilities Plan, to help us decarbonize and increase the efficiency of our facilities. Develop a target date to fully decarbonize city facilities and fund the projects to do that. For instance, the heat in this space is from a natural gas boiler that is reaching almost its end of life a couple of years from now. But it would be great to replace it with something that doesn't burn fossil fuels to help us decarbonize our city facilities when the time comes. I will be seeking grant funding to construct the designed solar plus storage projects for the library, city hall, and both fire stations. We could improve our outreach to employees on commute chip reduction. Currently, it's about 3% of employees who are participating, but we're getting better. We could increase the efficiency of landscape irrigation on city properties and right-of-way, as well as increase the number of drought-tolerant plantings and dormant lawns on city properties to help us with our water consumption. And then we could also right-size our waste containers at facilities that have really reduced the solid waste to reduce the collection costs. That's another option that we have in order to operate more sustainably, more efficiently, both in terms of resources and in finance. So ta-da. It'll be on the website soon, and I'm happy to take any questions, comments, criticism, anything about our city operations work related to Green Team or anything else but.
Any, any question? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I know your questions. Just compliments for you. I love this, right? Because how do we know where we want to go if we don't know where we're at today? So I really, really, really appreciate that, because you can pull out nuggets of what we're doing well and room for improvement. So I love that data capture to show that there's so many things that are happening behind the scenes and why things take so long, but we are doing that work. So I really, really appreciate that. The other thing is that there were no food pictures in that, in that presentation.
There was one picture of a pretty park. I couldn't, since we don't provide food as a, as a city, per se, I didn't know how to slip lasagna in there. For those of you who don't know, I made one presentation once with the picture of lasagna, and it's never been forgotten.
Great work, Alyssa.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is public comment. And... One second. And so it's time for a public comment. We, at, you may make comments relating to city business and not scheduled for any public hearing, which we are not having a public hearing this evening. So when I call your name from the sign-up sheet, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and state your name and correct info, and your contact information for the record. Each individual will be limited to one three-minute period to make the remarks, regardless of the number of topics you wish to address. Speakers may not comment upon, promote, advocate, or oppose, or speak against petitions, initiatives, ballot measures, or candidates. All comments shall be directed towards the council as a whole and not individual council members and not members of the audience. And please refrain from disruptive behavior such as booing, hissing, audible comments, cheering, and clapping. And so with that, again, we will have a timer. First person on the sign-up list is Ryan Reynolds.
My name is Ryan Reynolds. I live at 9020 Blomberg Street, Southwest, and wanted to come today to invite the council, the mayor, and anybody else in the community to a grand opening at the new Craft District, involving America's Credit Union and my own company, Wykert Realtors, Reynolds Real Estate, as well as the new Smash Burger joint, the Brew House Grill. And we're excited about it. It's this Thursday from 2:30 to 7:00. Live music, food, drinks, things for the kids to do, and all the restaurants and, and all of that as well. The significance of it, and this is why I wanted to speak, since post-World War II, when they came, they put in the interstates, it changed and really divided Tumwater. And Tumwater was a community revolving around the Falls and, and the first brewery, the Olympia Light Company, and a couple flour mills. And when the interstate came through, it divided the town in two. Well, then, in the late '50s, along came a thing called the Tai. Pretty cool place. And then after the Tai came Southgate Shopping Center, and that was in about '62. That once again separated our community in half. Well, now with the development of the new Craft District and that space, the community is finally tethered back together again. And this is a pretty cool opportunity for everybody that has grown up here that misses some things like the 8:00 AM and the 5:00 PM whistle from the brewery. And those memories, every morning, come back when we get to go in there to the office. And it'd be great if the community could come and partake in some of that celebration that we're so excited about. So with that, I'm all done. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next person on the list, and I'm having trouble reading this. Charles Pearson? Charlotte. Okay. Pearson. Sorry.
Sorry for the handwriting. I'm Charlotte Pearson, and I live at 903 Glass Avenue, Northeast Olympia. I wish to urge you councilmembers to pass the draft ordinance created by the Thurston Climate Collaborative to require home energy audits at the time of listing a property. The $200 cost of a home energy audit is negligible when hundreds of thousands of dollars are changing hands during a home sale. The information provided to a prospective home seller or buyer is invaluable. Home sellers can make wise updates before putting the home on the market. Home buyers can negotiate to have energy-saving repairs or improvements as part of the home inspection phase of the transaction. Home energy improvements are most likely to be done at this part of a home's life. This ordinance would be an easy and a cost-free way for the City of Tumwater to reduce energy use and greenhouse gas emissions. Unlike the report you just heard from the Green Team, every one of those things costs the city money. This is free. Portland, Oregon, and cities in California, Minnesota, and Michigan are already successfully implementing similar home energy audit requirements at the point implementing similar home energy audit requirements at the point of listing the house for sale. Home energy audits at the point of listing is one of the climate mitigation actions in the Thurston Climate Action Plan that all jurisdictions approved in 2021. The Climate Collaborative discussed the proposal and asked for input from all cities and interested parties. Input from the real estate companies with that they approved of having the home energy audits, but this must be enacted by all local jurisdictions in Thurston County. Otherwise, there will be confusion among the public and agents. You have the opportunity to start this common action among all the local jurisdictions. I urge you to put this on your agenda in the very near future.
Thank you. Next person is Lynn Fitzhugh.
Greetings. I'm Lynn Fitzhugh, Executive Director of Restoring Earth Connection. My address is 1716 11th Avenue Southeast. There are many of us here today, including those on Zoom, to say that we are tired of waiting. Tumwater passed the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan in 2021, as well as a climate emergency declaration, and yet little has happened on the 72 items in it contains. The one thing the Climate Collaborative agreed to do in 2023 was a tree study, and yet Tumwater has yet to complete its tree ordinance for two years, unable to bring it to passage. In 2024, the collaborative agreed to work on the home energy score audit, and it is ready to go. And yet somehow this is not making its way onto your agenda to vote. The real estate agents have even agreed to this in principle, but have been clear that it must be passed countywide for it to function for them. Thurston County will be bringing this up for consideration in October. The, the real estate agents need things to not be different in different zip codes. Tumwater has to do its part. It's my belief that this can happen. This is such low-hanging fruit. It costs Tumwater nothing. The energy audit itself costs only $200 to the owner, but as the experience of other cities already doing this show us, like Portland, it makes a difference in improving the energy efficiency of the overall housing stock. Home energy is 26% of our local greenhouse gas footprint, so this is an important area to affect change in. And when a house sells is the easiest time after its actual construction to get these changes made because buyers may choose a house with a better score over another house. It incentivizes sellers, when they pick things to fix before sale, to think of making energy fixes. When a house sells, it is frankly kind of monopoly money on both sides. Sellers are realizing huge amounts of equity, which has been intangible to them for the entire time they've owned the house, and the buyers are obligating themselves to 15- to 30-year mortgage debt. If, if a somewhat expensive improvement is made, say $10,000 on new double-pane windows, spread over a 30-year mortgage, that's not much. Or $10,000 out of equity to get it sold, it's not hugely felt. What other pots of money exist to get these changes made? This is just common sense. The upgrades that will be done both increase the value of the house, but also create local jobs carrying out those upgrades.
I don't mean to interrupt, but the time.
Okay, last sentence. We do not need to wait until the state legislature eventually acts. We need to get on without addressing our climate emergency for the sake of all our futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online registered?
Yes, I have three online. Hold on just one sec. The first one will be a Tom Crawford.
All right. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tom Crawford. I live at 10016 Lookout Drive Northwest. And as many of you know, whom I've spoken to personally over the years, I've been involved in climate change work for quite a while here in our communities. And I too am here to urge you to put on your agenda shortly, the home energy score ordinance that staff has prepared and drafted for you. As I'm not going to repeat the excellent points that others have made on, on this particular measure, other than to point out as well as increasing the value of the home for the seller because of energy improvements that a seller would be motivated to make as a result of this measure. It also reduces the operating cost of the buyer by reducing their ongoing energy expenses and costs. So I think, as others have said, this is just a common sense measure. This has been originally proposed to cities back in 2019, and so staff has been working on it. Other elected officials have, have thought about it. I know some of you have been thinking about it for a while now. And so I just, I just really encourage you, this is a good time to act and go ahead and put it on your agenda, get it passed. It's pretty, pretty straightforward, pretty common sense. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next person?
Okay, next I have Paris McCluskey.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Paris McCluskey. I live at 5226 Puget Road, Northeast Olympia. So right after the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan passed, Thurston Climate Action Team tried to organize an effort to get one of the items, the home energy score audit, to go forward. Real estate agents convened and agreed to, to the language, then our elected officials shelved the draft, the program. So in the last year, Climate Mitigation Collaborative has focused on getting language ready to pass a home energy score audit. This would require all homes for sale to have a simple and inexpensive energy audit at the time of sale, so new buyers will know if the home is energy efficient. Portland, as others have said, Portland, Oregon already does this, and evidence shows it causes homeowners to make some improvements before listing, raises the value of homes that are energy efficient, and can result in requested improvements during the inspection phase. In short, when homes are being sold, it's one of the easiest times for improvements to be made. However, now, however, seems like the process of passing a home energy score audits ordinance at all four jurisdictions, Lacey Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County, has again stalled. So please do consider passing this ordinance in Tumwater so we can get it passed countywide. And this will improve the energy efficiency of the overall housing stock in Thurston County. This will apply to rental housing as well, thereby reducing the heating bills of tenants. So thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay. And our last person is going to be Natasha Hayes.
Go ahead.
Hello, Natasha Hayes here. I live at 2922 West Side Drive Northwest in Olympia. And I'm, again, talking about very similar things about, you know, passing the language for the home energy audit score, which is, it's really important that, you know, that it get done. And for many of the reasons that people have talked about, and I think one of the most important ones indeed that has been mentioned is the fact that people can compare the energy costs of homes. And also, you know, because of that, they can, you know, they can make a better decision. And, you know, again, many of the things that I was going to say have already been said, but I think it really is very, very important as well that this be uniform across Thurston County. And so that's why, you know, Tumwater, doing this is very important because of the Realtors, that's, you know, that's the particular desire of the, desire of the Realtors is for, is for it to be uniform, and it would make it much easier for everybody. So anyway, I mean, I think those are my primary comments, and I also wanted to say that I very much appreciate the Green Team presentation because it sounds like Tumwater is very concerned about conservation issues and energy issues. And so I very, very much appreciate that. It made me feel good to hear all that before we were going to be giving our, our speeches about this. So thank you again.
Thank you. All right. Those are all the names that were signed up. Are there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on public comment? All right. I don't see anyone coming forward. So now we will move to the consent calendar. Do I have anyone wanting to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Agabi and seconded by Councilmember Dolby. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right. We have approved the consent calendar, and with that, we've approved minutes of the City Council Work Session of August 26th. Approve the minutes of the City Council Meeting of September 2nd. Approve the City Council Work Session September 9th. We've done pavement vouchers, service provider agreement with HDR Engineering for Old Highway 99 and the 79th Avenue Roundabout Design Amendment Number Two. Excuse me. Service provider agreement with Robert W. Droll, Landscape Architect for the Trails and Park Master Plan Design Amendment Number Two. Purchase of the Deschutes Valley property with lot authorizing me to sign the water resource and signing another document with that. Local, in a local agreement with the Tumwater School District for the School Resource Officer Program. An appointment of Dana Day, Judy Keys, Leanna Le-Laylana Shelton, Tom Sparks, and Leanna Madison to the Barnes Lake Management District Steering Committee. So those are all the items that were on the consent calendar. And now we're going to move to council considerations. The first item is the provider agreement with Olympic Health and Recovery for the crisis response, and we have our fire chief here to present.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I do have just a couple slides we'll start off with tonight. And we're here to talk about our agreement we've reached with Olympic Health and Recovery Services for our Tumwater Mobile Outreach Team. Just kind of timeline-wise, I had to look back. It was actually March of 2024 that City Administrator Parks had asked me to reach out to Olympic Health and Recovery about crisis response services and what our options might be. As it turns out, there was legislation passed in 2023 that established the ability for community-based crisis teams as part of fire service agencies to promote the outreach in the community for, for better behavioral health response. Since 2021, Olympic Health and Recovery has ran a number of these programs across Thurston and Mason Counties that you're familiar with, Lacey Mott Scout Program and such. So we had an opportunity to partner with Olympic Health through the Fire Department where they were able to obtain funding to help support our program in Tumwater, to staff the, the Tumwater Mobile Outreach Team. I'm pleased to say that all, all of the employees have been, all the positions have been filled. It's a co-responder model. There's a crisis clinician and a peer support navigator on each team. It's similar to the programs I mentioned before. There's 20 for our coverage. We're going to have a team available to us here in Tumwater. It's available, it's going to be, be kind of supported through the Fire Department. They'll be monitoring our dispatches, our calls and such, but they'll certainly be available because much of the crisis response is coming in through 911 to the Police Department, so there's going to be a connection there so that the team can assist with those calls as well. And certainly they'll be available for the, support the regional crisis line and calls in Tumwater as well. And they'll be out in the community, visible and doing that outreach work. So that's the basics of the program. We've got the recommended action here, but I also wanted to introduce Joe Avalos, the Executive Director of Olympic Health and Recovery Services, and Timothy Lewis, the Crisis Outreach Program Manager. I'm sure I screwed that title up, but he oversees all of their outreach teams. I just want to invite Joe up to say, say a few words.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, council members, Mayor. I just want to say, the chief said it, said it all. We've, we've been looking forward to this partnership for some time. I don't think, the chief didn't mention that there's only two community-based crisis teams in the entire state that are moving forward with this new fund source, so we're excited to be one of those and partnering with Tumwater. We've had tremendous success with our partnerships in our other jurisdictions, and we expect to have the same here. We, what we've done is, we're kind of looked at as a national leader in this, in this, not only in this state, but just nationwide. I just came from a retreat in Virginia where we explained kind of how we're making it work in partnership, and it's unique. It's unique what we're doing in this region, and we're excited to do it with, with Tumwater and partner with you all. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolby?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Joe. Nice to see you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So we have the Mobile Outreach Team, and then we have FD Cares. Are these proactive ways of responding to different needs in our community? And then with that, are you tracking when you have multiple contacts, right? Because no one just stays within the city limits.
Oh, absolutely.
How does that fit into all of this and tracking and engaging?
Yep. So our folks will primarily respond to behavioral health crises, but we will absolutely work in partnership with FD Cares for medical needs and follow-up needs for sure. And because, to your, to your point exactly, there are folks that, that are transitioning across not only the cities, but also counties, and because we provide services, crisis services, not just Thurston, Mason, but also Lewis County and Grace Harbor and Outlying Counties, we have it within our system to know, okay, this person that we're seeing today, they were in Lewis County yesterday, let's find out where they need, what their best support is going forward.
And we didn't have that, we haven't had that depth of knowledge prior, right? It's been piecemeal. So having this, I'm hoping you'll be tracking, like, what impact you can have with multiple touchpoints?
Absolutely. Across multiple jurisdictions, across multiple service providers, hospitals, ERs, I mean, we're just trying to make sure that we're connecting people to the right resource and not duplicating our responses. That does sometimes happen from time to time.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Von Holtz?
I am so excited about this. In all the hats I've ever worn, I worked at DSHS and I was part of Behavioral Health Administration, and this work is so important, and it's so important for people in crisis not to be put in jail where they don't belong and to be able to get the help that they need. So thank you very much. I'm really excited that we're doing this.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
Councilmember Swarthup?
So we will have, I'm just looking through the contract here. So this is, we'll have providers, you'll be supporting Tumwater, is that correct? Is that how this works?
That's correct, yes.
Trying to figure out the nuts and bolts of how this will work. So it looks like we will have you 24 hours a day. And then where are you based out of then? So will you be?
Oh, sure. Forgot.
Certainly it seems based out of the Fire Department. So they'll spend a fair amount of time at the fire station, just interacting with our crews, but we also, the city has some, owns a building on Lee Street. It has a vacant unit in it, it's an office unit. So we're setting up actual office space for them there so they can land, do their reports, all their computer stuff, their meetings and such, but they'll spend a lot of time in the fire station as well.
So when they get, they'll be called out, like you get called out, and so they'll be reporting like fire?
Yeah, they, they are going to be dispatched per se through TCOM. It's going to be mainly by telephone contact, but they'll, they'll have our active 911, they'll see our calls come in, they have the ability to see the notes from dispatch and those calls. So they'll be monitoring that, but basically, at least at the start, the team's going to be pretty much responding upon request of fire or police staff to, to the scene of an incident.
So like, when you guys go out on a call, they, you see something that you would expect that you would, with them to respond to, then they would come out and respond as well then?
Correct. They would respond to the scene, yes.
So is, how does this, because we had lead at one point. I thought we were, you know, the county was looking at lead. I was, this is not lead, correct? What happens to, do you transport? you transport? Where do people go after this?
Oh, those are all great questions. Um, the ultimate goal of this program is to have the right response at the right time for people in behavioral health crisis. Ultimately, what it will do is reduce the use of first responder services by having our folks dispatch. You know, they have their own vehicle. They will be able to transport people who are voluntary to whatever resource they might need, whether that is a emergency department or whether that's a voluntary, uh, appointment somewhere, behavioral health or even medical. I mean, that's the whole, the whole goal of this is to get people into crisis out of that and then provide follow-up care and connection to the right resource.
Because I understand that beds have been an issue. It's like having a place to even take someone.
Absolutely. Uh, that is absolutely an issue in our region. Actually, we have a lot of involuntary beds, but we don't have very many, or if any, voluntary, uh, beds. So our team is creative though, and we, we're able to find resources and, um, and, and follow-up. A lot of times we just need to go out and engage with the person and come back the next day and, and connect them to the right resource. And that doesn't necessarily mean they have to go to a, a, a place, an inpatient facility or anything. We try and mitigate that as much as we can.
So this went through, did it go through the?
Yes.
So I'm sorry, I'm asking all these questions that they already got to ask. So, sorry.
Actually, for this agreement in particular, we did get a chance to bring it to Public Health and Safety. That's why we're bringing it to you under consideration. Just the timing of the finalizing the agreement.
Of course.
And the startup date of October 1st for the program.
I realize they got a chance to hear it and I hope I'm not like asking the same questions, but I'm just, this is just a wonderful.
Never apologize for questions.
Okay, thank you. This is, this is very exciting and I agree with our, that having this opportunity because, um, to be able to serve our communities. So thank you for this opportunity.
Welcome. And thank you all. And again, happy to answer questions afterward. Oh, yes, sir.
Joe, I think, oh, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. I just kind of jumped in. I think I remember asking you this question during a Public Health and Safety meeting about involuntary commitment and the South Sound Behavioral Hospital in Lacey. And, uh, can you please briefly clarify how somebody would be taken over there if they are involuntary commitment?
To South Sound Behavioral Hospital? So South Sound Behavioral Hospital, actually they're located right, uh, just a few steps from our main office in Lacey. Um, so they accept both voluntary and involuntary into their roles. And so oftentimes, most of the time, they're going to take somebody that's walking in, um, voluntarily, but there are times for sure when they need somebody, uh, that who meets criteria for involuntary commitment, they're a danger to themselves or others, and they can be admitted there through South Sound after they've seen a designated crisis responder. And those individuals actually also are employed by OHS. So if that is something that is needed by any individual we send, we see even in Tom Water, we can make that referral seamlessly and we can get that process started. We want to avoid it as much as we can, but unfortunately there are times when we do have to make that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, on that note?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I move that we authorize the media to sign the service provider agreement with the Olympic Health and Recovery Services for crisis response.
I'll second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Agabi, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? All right, the motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Great. All right, the next item that we will be on our agenda is ordinance number O 2025-013 BNO Tax Model Ordinance Update. And Troy, our director from the Finance Department, will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council members. Uh, this will be just a very short presentation about a change to the model ordinance for business and occupation tax, also known as BNO. So because we are a BNO city, we've previously, many years ago, adopted the BNO model ordinance. Um, any city that does business, or excuse me, any business that does business in the city of Tom Water needs a, uh, not only a state business license, but a Tom Water endorsement. Uh, the cost of that is, uh, it's $50 endorsement for the initial purchase and then $20 renewal fees after that. There's an exception carved out in there. It's so that if a, a business that's located outside of the city comes into our city to do business, but they, that amount, the amount of the business they do is less than $2,000 a year, um, they can get a no-fee endorsement. So they don't have to pay that $50 or $20. The change, uh, that, that is, uh, coming is changing that from $2,000 to $4,000. And, uh, and that doesn't affect anyone in the city of Tom Water, just those outside of the city. Uh, this is a change that was adopted by the state legislature, goes into effect January 1st, 2026, and, uh, keeps us, adopting this change keeps us in compliance with the model ordinance. Uh, this is a little bit more business-friendly approach, uh, by allowing that higher threshold. It does mean a little bit less revenue for the city, but it's not expected to be a significant amount. And, uh, the really cool thing about this, uh, for, for me, is the legislature kind of thought ahead and instead of having to come back to you every four years or so to, to get a new threshold approved, uh, this will be tied to inflation and it will automatically update every four years. So our recommended app, action is to adopt the ordinance. And before we do, I can answer any questions that you have.
All right, any questions? Councilmember Dolhoff?
I guess I don't have any questions because it's mandated. So we have, we have to do this. I think, I think it's pretty straightforward, Troy.
This one's a pretty easy.
Okay. Mayor, I have no questions. I'm in support.
Any other questions? Comments? Motion?
I would move to adopt ordinance O 2, O 2025-013 BNO Tax Model Ordinance Update, amending city code 5.07.070 to remain compliant with the state model ordinance requirements.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Dolhoff, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. Any discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Okay, that motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Uh, you get to stay at the podium for another moment as we do the quarterly financial update.
All right. Thank you again. And, uh, for, for the record, Troy Niemeyer, Finance Director. Um, so this is, uh, the next in a series of quarterly financial updates for the council. And we are going to jump right in and start talking about sales tax, if my clicker will Thank you. All right. So this is, this is a little bit messy with all the numbers, but, uh, kind of bottom line, we had an outstanding month for sales tax collections for August, uh, which is great news. Uh, we did, we haven't had that, uh, good news every month. So if you look in that 2025 column and go down to August, uh, over, a little over $1,082,000 in sales tax collected in August, that's the highest in the last three years. Uh, so that's, uh, fantastic news. That brings us, uh, year-to-date on the month-to-month basis, $121,000 higher than last year, uh, for a 1%, 1.8% increase. Uh, a month ago, in July, we had a, a less favorable collection and, uh, we were, um, actually down year-to-date by about a percent and a half. So this was really great news. If, if you're like me, you may, you may have noticed, uh, a lot of ups and downs in the sales tax collections, uh, throughout the year. And so I plotted that to, to kind of fact-find and prove my theory. And yes, it's, sales tax is known to be a little volatile anyway compared to property tax and, and other, uh, tax streams. Um, and this kind of shows a little bit of that volatility. Uh, to take that a little further, I overlaid that with, uh, 2023 and 2024. And so the blue bar, that gets a little messy because they're all fairly close, but, uh, the blue bar is, uh, 2025. So you can see there's, it is pretty normal to have that volatility and have, uh, a, you know, some, some swings in those numbers from month to month. They do follow a little bit of a pattern. Uh, but the, the really interesting thing about this is in 2025, if you look at April at the blue dot, uh, that is the, the lowest collection in three years. And now if you swing over to the right and look at August, it's the highest collection in three years. So, so in that long time period, we've had the highest and the lowest in the same year. Um, and so that is a little unusual and a little volatile. But great news for August. So I'm excited. Uh, if we look at that on.
I believe Councilmember Agabi has a question.
Hi, Joe.
Hello.
Oh, um, the jump is significant. Do you know why?
Not really. I, I wish I had, uh, some better information, but I, I don't have a specific.
Okay. Thank you.
August usually is a pretty good month, but, um, I don't know why it's higher than normal. I'll see if I can find anything out.
Thank you.
Report back. Okay. Uh, so if we switch over instead of the month-to-month view and we go to the, uh, budget to actual, um, so we're at 66% through the year, through the end of August. Um, on the sales tax, we've collected 61.18%. So we are still running a little bit behind, uh, but August certainly helped us move in the right direction and start catching up. Public safety sales tax, uh, as you know, this is just a different piece of sales tax that's directed for public safety purposes. Um, also a great month in August, of course, um, about 20,000 over last year. And, uh, the, the thing that excites me about this, this graphic is, um, as you know, this, this tax was first passed in 2023 by the voters of Thurston County and started collecting, uh, middle part of 2024. Now we're at a point where we have comparable data. So we can look month-to-month to see, um, how that's doing. Uh, BNO tax in previous presentations has kind of been our shining star, been doing great. Uh, however, we did have a, a pretty poor month of July in comparison to the prior July, uh, which kind of brought us back down to earth, uh, but a good August. And so we're back up, uh, only up 2%, but that's about $50,000 that we're up, uh, year over year. And now when we look at this one on the budget-to-actual perspective, uh, we budgeted a little more conservative for BNO tax. Um, and so we're actually at 76% collected and 66% through the year. So, uh, on the budget-to-actual, that one's doing really well also. Uh, for these other categories, uh, all tracking along pretty good, uh, building permits, uh, we have exceeded our entire year's revenue, expected revenue of building permits through the end of August. So, uh, another banner year for that. Uh, Medic One, looks like it's a little behind there, but there's a, a lag time in the billing between incur the expenses, we submit it to Medic One and get our money back. So no concerns there. Grants are starting to come in from Congress, sustainability grants. Um, and then the last one I'll point out on this is, uh, Parks and Rec. That's one, as we've looked through the beginning part of the year, there's not much going on in parks because it's, it's rainy and there's not a lot of activities. We've had the, the busy summer now and that revenue has shot up to 82% collected. So we should be right on track, uh, for the end of the year. Uh, switching over to expenditures, uh, this is general fund and all, all general fund departments listed here are, um, below, some a little below, um, expected and some a lot below. Uh, in total, the general fund, we're about 10% uh, below our expected percent, expected expenditures for this time of year. Um, and so that's, that's great. That gives us a little bit of a cushion, uh, should sales tax continue to lag behind. Okay, switching over to the enterprise funds, um, I did something a little bit different this time. The top part of this graphic is the same as you've seen before, includes everything, um, all the grants, all the capital projects. And for water especially, um, when you look at those percentages, it's really weird because we're 66% of the way through the year, only 14% collected on revenue and 11% on expenses. And that's because of big capital projects that are programmed in, uh, most notably the, the, uh, water storage facility and the ONM Center. And so, uh, those haven't started yet. So we've got, we don't have the financing revenue. We don't have the expenses to build it. So that's why that looks so skewed. So what I did at the bottom is took out those two big capital projects to kind of normalize it and we can kind of focus in on, uh, the, the day-to-day operating revenue and expenses. And so that looks a lot better. Uh, it still shows a little low on the revenue side, um, but again, just delays between when someone uses utilities, gets a bill for utilities and then pays their utilities, we're a month and a half or better behind. So. Uh, similar on sewer, not as heavily impacted by capital projects. Uh, what I did notice when looking into this, especially the bottom piece.
And I see Councilmember Alt Hauser has a question?
Yeah, I just had a question on the water. Is, is that a little bit lower because some of the, the billing issues have not, um, like September is a big month for watering, so is August. Is, is that why that's not reflected, why we're lower? Like it sort of seems like water compared to sales tax is more predictable and less volatile, but maybe that's an incorrect assumption.
Uh, I'd say that's, that's probably generally correct. Um, certainly the, the weather impacts it. Um, was it last year that we, or this, I don't know. If we have a super hot summer and people are irrigating really heavily, uh, that would certainly increase our water sales. Um, and this, this summer hasn't tended to be as hot with the extremes. Um, and, uh, to your point, also, the, the water, yeah, the water for August, um, had, didn't get billed until the first part, at 1st of September. And so this does not include, um, uh, August water, which is, I'm sure is a big month.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Oops. Too, too fast on the clicker there. Thank you. Uh, okay. So for sewer, not as heavily impacted by capital projects. Um, the, the top half looks pretty normal. Uh, the bottom half, actually, the revenue i- is really high. So I looked into that and, uh, it turns out that that's, there's been a lot more connection fees and development fees that we've charged related to sewer, uh, over what we budgeted. And so that's why that revenue is so much higher. Expense is just a couple percent higher, but with that much extra revenue, that doesn't, isn't concerning. And then storm water, um, a little more impacted. Uh, so I did, did strip out the capital projects. Again, not as impacted as water, but, uh, taking out the, the two really big projects, uh, the storm utility also has several smaller capital projects that I left in. And so that's, that is throwing this off a little bit. Uh, we started some of those projects, incurred some expenses, and so we got the 46% expenses and only 28% of revenue. Part of that is the, we haven't received reimbursements from state agencies for those, um, expenses yet. So, uh, so those will be coming and that will equalize. And then finally golf. Um, golf is another one, very seasonal, kind of like parks, um, although busy most of the year from what I hear. Um, anyway, the, the top column again, or top rows again, do have, uh, one capital project in them and as well as the general fund support. Uh, so on the bottom part, we took out that one project and took out general fund support. Um, and that brings us to, uh, total revenue at 67%, so right in line. However, um, you'll, you may recall golf collects their revenue in a different system and it takes time to get that over into our system. So as of this report, August revenue is not included for golf. And so that, that golf revenue at the bottom is actually going to be much higher. Um, August is, is obviously a very busy month with the nice weather. Um, expenses however, are paid out of our main financial system and are up to date. And so, uh, they're only 51% spent for expenses. So that's, uh, looks like they're doing fantastic.
Uh, I believe Councilmember Alt Hauser has another question?
Yeah, similar, so similar to my, my previous question, I guess. Like golf is obviously a great month, or August is obviously a great month for golf. December is notoriously bad for golf. So is, is the 67% like, I guess, is, is the 67% weighted to the months or is that 67% kind of of the total of where we were without August? Like, because if, if it's not weighted in some way, I guess what I'm sort of curious about is if we feel good about it compared to where we should be over prior years at this point in time through the, through the year. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And it's, it's not weighted, um, but it is only through July. Um, so, um, you, without, without more analysis, um, I'd say just off the top of my head, it's, we're probably looking pretty good.
Okay.
Looking towards the end of the year. Um, Ju- August will be a, a big month for revenue for the golf course. Uh, September, I suspect, will be also. The weather's held out pretty well. Um, and then we'll see how October and November goes. But, uh, but certainly to your point, the, you know, November, December, it's going to start to rain. There's going to be. rain, there's going to be, it's going to slow down. So hopefully by the end of the year, they're kind of leveled out.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, so now we're going to turn to the economy in general a little bit, and we've got more good news. I saw a social media post where the Penguins from McDonald Island were marked safe from tariffs. And so that's, that's a positive for the economy, I think. But in, in all seriousness, the, you know, the last time we talked, the tariffs were, were all over the place. They're up, they're down, they're on, they're off. That has certainly quieted down, which I think is a good thing. There's, now there'll be some court actions, it sounds like, but at least for the moment, things are quieter and more predictable, which is good for the economy and good for markets. Another good bright spot is GDP, that's the gross domestic product, and that's a, kind of a widely accepted indicator of how the economy is doing. Is it growing? Is it shrinking and by how much? And so in the last report that we gave you, we reported that the first quarter, two thousand and twenty-five GDP was down zero point three percent, a negative, not down, a negative zero point three percent. As additional data came in, that was revised down further to a negative zero point five percent. And we talked about how if there's a second consecutive quarter of negative GDP, that's broadly seen as an indicator of a recession. So that didn't happen, so that's great. It came, the second quarter came in at positive three percent, so good sign for the economy there. Moving to the other side of the slide, the unemployment rate. I initially had this marked as an upside because historically, unemployment rate under five percent is considered good. I ended up changing it to, to the risk category, it really could have went either way, because it is ticking up slightly. It's not a big spike like we saw when the pandemic hit by any means, but it is starting to move up, which is causing some concern. And then the initial jobless claims from August turned out to be the highest number in three years. So that's, for me, what pushed it into more of a risk category. So that's something I'm sure everybody's going to be keeping an eye on. It's potentially an indicator of a weakening jobs market, so we'll see what happens. Still lots of political risks going on. The, you know, threats of the president firing the Federal Reserve Chair, Federal Reserve Governor, he did in fact fire the Commissioner of the BLS. And, and the, the reason this is important is these are, I would call them quasi-governmental federal agencies. They're not true federal agencies, they're part public, part private, but they were purposefully designed to be non-political. And the reason for that is we want truth in the numbers. We need to ensure accurate data collected and distributed properly and, and completely factual without any political influence. And so injecting political influence into these agencies is widely seen as dangerous for the economy. Bad, you know, people, investors need, need to be able to trust the numbers. And if they can't trust them, that undermines market credibility. So that's, so that's definitely a risk. We still have inflationary policies, geopolitical tensions, so lots of stuff going on. Which brings us to inflation, kind of like employment. The numbers aren't terrible, they're not like we saw in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two where it just went through the ceiling, but it is ticking up again. And you'll notice on these numbers, pick any month, August right there in the middle, two point nine percent, that's the overall inflation rate. And then I have core at three point one percent. Core inflation excludes food and energy prices because those are widely seen as very volatile and they can, they can move up and down really fast. So just informational there. August was the first full month for most tariffs and economists are contributing the increase in inflation to tariffs. So this is that inflation data going back to, to two thousand and twenty-one, but just to show you the difference between the core and the, the overall CPI, the, the solid blue line, darker blue one is, is all items overall CPI and then the dotted lighter blue line is core. And so you can see that can really vary sometimes. Right now, they're pretty close together, but, but they can definitely change. Okay, and then we're going to wrap it up with more current events. You may have seen in your email invitation from the State Auditor's Office about their entrance conference, we have that today. The audit is in full swing, keeping the finance department really busy with lots of requests, lots of data, lots of meetings. And we're, they're doing an audit of our financial statements, audit of our federal funds, which is called the single audit, and then an accountability audit. Total cost of that is about eighty thousand dollars and that's what we had in the budget for it, so. And so with that, I can answer any more questions if you have.
Right. Any questions?
Busy.
Councilmember Gobby?
I was just going to say he's very busy.
Oh.
Very busy, yes.
Uh, Councilmember Ron Haltz.
I'm just wondering if you've spoken with your colleagues in neighboring cities, did they have such a great August with sales tax revenue as we did? Are we better?
I haven't spoke with them about August in particular. I, I have spoken with them about the rest of the year. We've, we've been doing better. We did better last year and we've been doing better this year, so that makes me happy.
Me too.
Right. Any other questions? Councilmember Kathy. You're on mute.
Thanks, I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, I, I'm concerned, I think this is a great report and I, I didn't expect it to be this good. I expected the work on it, Troy, to be this good, but I'm talking about the numbers. But I'm, I'm concerned about food and the cost that I'm already hearing from families that are, that are struggling. And, I mean, I don't see that reflected in anything that you presented, but this has got to impact our community, just like it is in others. I mean, people simply cannot buy some things right now with the cost of groceries and food and especially what's happening in California where a lot of the, you know, fresh stuff and so forth come the warning about fresh foods and, I don't know, just the whole thing to do with us not caring whether people have food to eat or medical care. And how is, is that going? Do we talk about that anywhere, how that could impact our area and our programs or hopes and dreams for Tom Water? I mean, I think we're going to go through some kind of a, of a something here if this continues.
Yeah, we sure could. We'll, it doesn't, you're right, it doesn't really show up in a presentation like this, but certainly things like, like the inflation numbers, the jobless rate, you know, impact real people on the ground, so there's bound to be impacts.
You know, I think it's good for us to keep our, keep our ears and eyes open to what, what is happening locally. And it's such a big issue that it feels like it belongs somewhere else other than in Tom Water, but it's right here. Thanks for a good, a good report, Troy.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah. I like the way you did it this time, it seemed like it was bigger, the font and the numbers and everything, and then the, the colors and so forth. That was, you know, I wasn't straining to see up or down or sideways or anything, it was good, very good, thanks.
Good, thank, yeah, thank you for the feedback. I, I'll, I'll definitely keep that in mind and I did purposely make some things a little bigger to try to make them easier to read because I don't want to sound like it's for a selfish reason, but if I'm, you know, I'm at the podium and I don't have a laptop in front of me. So, so I'm looking all the way across the room at the screen and I have to be able to read my own slides. I, I will continue to make those numbers large.
I'm going to say you did it for all of us then.
That's right, I did it for the greater good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Swartho.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to say something to Councilmember Kathy, not even put on a plug for, but the, with the Tom Water Education Foundation, our Principal's Emergency Fund, our top three things continue to be housing, food, utilities and food. And so that's where our funds are, the funds that we raise go to, and it's trying to keep families and houses and they're just one, one paycheck away and so that's, it's very important. And then I was thinking that we do have a new director for the Food Bank and so that might be something that would be interesting to have, perhaps have the new Food Bank Director come in and perhaps do a presentation and just have them talk to us about what they're seeing as far as an uptick and just get a chance to meet them and maybe get a chance to see what they're seeing as well in our community, so.
That's a very good, that's a very good idea, Alina, I like that, yeah. And those three things, boy, if we can help out in those three areas, which I think Tom Water's been committed to, but that's great, thanks for highlighting that. And I, I think it would be very good for us to hear from the new director of the Food Bank and let him know we're, we're here to help and what we have going to, you know, you know, in what we're committed to and hear how we can help. Do you have it on the list now, Mayor?
Yep, I, I see people writing, I do, I see.
I heard your pen scratching.
Any other questions or comments? So, well, thank you, Troy, very helpful and. So our next item, we're, we're really on the money today, I'll tell you what. Our next item is the ten-year financial plan review baseline assessment and city administrator parks.
Yes, thank you, I'm only going to take one second here to introduce Morgan to you again. So Morgan Shook with ECO Northwest is here tonight and he is going to be presenting to you essentially the baseline financial assessment that he and his team have been working on for the City of Tom Water with help from our director team. I think what I would say in advance is I think he's open to having questions as we go. This is important information, but it's also complex. And I would also say that this is intended to be information for you. We're happy to have, you know, further conversations about the information, but the next step after this will be, once the strategic plan is completed, the council's identified their priorities and we begin to talk next, early next year about budgeting for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight biennium. The tool that Morgan has developed with his team is something that we can use to plug in different scenarios, different what-ifs. And so while this is a baseline assessment, we're really excited about the, the applicability and the really functionality that, that the tool itself gives us in terms of trying to look at our overall financial stability. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce Morgan. I'm also going to say that Troy and I may be hovering a little bit to answer questions as you may have them. Morgan knows a lot about our finances, he doesn't necessarily know everything, so we're going to be here to support him, but with that, I'm going to turn it over.
Thank you very much, Lisa and Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm glad to be back here, following Troy after his last quarterly update. Great, so just a little bit to level set before we get moving here. Lisa brought our firm along here to be, one, a companion to your strategic planning process to help you understand the implications of kind of the choices made in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, as well as trying to align your values and priorities with the way that the city spends its dollars. And so part of that here analytically is just to give you good information and so building a model that reflects the city's financial structure, its cost structure, its revenue base and allowing us to ask what-ifs, right? What if we spent money over here? What if we raised revenue this way? What would be sort of the impact both on sort of next year's budget, next biennium budget, but also what does it mean on a turn? I think, I know Lisa and the previous city manager and Troy have stressed the structural challenges that municipal organizations have with respect to sort of delivering services, but also the revenue, revenue limitations that they have, both from a sort of statutory perspective and the one percent limit factor that governs your property tax levies, but other, other rate-based tools that will fluctuate up and down just depending on what the economy is doing. So, so that said, I'll just reiterate what Lisa said here is, this is informational today, please do ask questions. I've tried to posit some things for you to be thinking about as the city, as you all sort of start, take deliberations around strategic planning and how to sort of implement that in next year's budget. So let's just do some grounding here when we talk about the city. And I think it, as Troy sort of articulated from a fund perspective, we generally think of it as basically, cities are kind of in three different businesses typically. They're what we call sort of general government, so basically services that are delivered to constituents that are funded with taxes, right? And then there are sort of enterprise things where basically you may be delivering services, but people are paying you a fee for that, right? You're sort of like a business in that way. And sometimes cities also contract with the other, save things, but that's, the two typical pieces are really the, the general government stuff and then the enterprise stuff. And what we have here is really to split those things out because from a strategic planning perspective, I mean, the enterprise funds are really important, but we tend to really want to focus in on the general government stuff. And that's because that's where really the biggest sort of policy trade-offs are and decisions happening, right? You're making decisions about public safety, about planning, land use, right? Whereas the enterprise funds, I would say, very important because you're delivering key services, but you're really then relying on users and other kinds of grants and financing vehicles to pay for those services that you're delivering. So it's a little more, you know, like use a sports metaphor, straight over tackle. So what is the city of Tom Water look like? And what we see here, right, is given its overall structure, what things that we're calling sort of general government funds, it's really basically two-thirds of the entire city budget, right? Now, so things that you're really sort of supported all by tax dollars, you know, the core funds that cover police, public safety, sort of fire, planning, parks and other things. So I think I just want to make sure here, going forward, what I'm really going to narrow our conversation in is on the general government funds and specifically the operating side, the capital side is important too, but just to keep things a little cleaner, we'll just leave capital planning off to the side for the time being. So just to sort of reiterate, you know, for those of you that get deep into your sort of budget and your fund structure, what does that actually mean? It really means we're talking about the general fund specifically, the public safety fund, where you're collecting the public safety taxes, your E and R funds, and then a range of smaller sort of dedicated revenue or expense funds that all feed into it. So basically, think of this as basically, you try to keep money clean for either purpose or statutory purposes, but in the end, they all kind of roll up into these discussions or these budget discussions you have around sort of, you know, what is, what are we required to do? What are we trying to make discretionary choices around? What are we trying to prioritize? This is graphically sort of how that, all that money really relates to each other. Okay. The other key idea here that I want to socialize with you is that when we think about the city, I tend to want to simplify it into kind of two ways, right? And for the most part, the city is personnel and your costs are related to that personnel, their salaries, their benefits, the other things that may go with them like equipment or training or things of that nature. And then some places are a little more like consumables, things you're buying or services delivering, like, you know, building a, a park or maintaining a road, right? Where you're having to buy materials and services to support that. And so what you see on the left here is our division of kind of what we're calling labor versus non-labor expenses, just to help simplify that. And to no surprise, right, the big departments, at least by costs, expenditures, are the police and fire department and that's no surprise because the services being delivered there are through human beings and staff, right? Police officers, firefighters, and those are your big costs. You have some attendant non-labor costs there. And so when you look at the chart on the right, you can kind of see that again, right? So basically, of that sixty percent of your overall budget and operating pieces, again, another sixty to seventy percent of that is actually in personnel. So this is really important to think about as we move forward. In some departments, delivering their services is really about headcount FTEs to do more or less of something. In other places, it's really about trying to find those additional dollars. In other places, it's really about trying to find those additional dollars that support things. So if I'm zooming in on things like transportation engineering, right? No surprise in the public works side of things that you're using a lot of non-labor equipment, materials to actually deliver the service, patching those potholes and such. So that gives us that sort of grounding, what does the world look like today? And one thing that's worth thinking about here is you made those commitments in the last budget cycle. And the question is like, well, what does that mean from a long-term fiscal sustainability perspective? Are we, you know, given those hiring, those cost commitments we made, can we keep pace with that, given how the economy is growing, this sort of, Troy updates you on a quarterly basis, like how are we doing on our property tax collections? How are we doing with our sales tax collections? And so what we've run here is a sort of baseline projection. How does the city fare in a world where the economy may grow in different paces? And so what you're seeing here is basically, we'll call it a sort of status quo baseline. We're not touching anything. Just imagine the 2025 budget just rolled forward with the sort of cost escalations of paying people more, having to respond to sort of higher benefit costs for delivering, you know, buying healthcare and things of that nature. And then the economy perform one way or the other, right? There's no new expansions, no new initiatives, you're not issuing any debt to build anything, doesn't account for any sort of unmet needs identified by departments or through unfunded new requirements at the state or federal level. And it also has this idea that, you know, you're always trying to sort of push out the cliff as much as possible. Some communities can do this and because they are growing nicely, right? And I think Tom Water fits into that place. You kind of actually have a good picture because you have such a strong sort of tax base that is, continues to sort of outperform many other communities. Many other communities face the fiscal cliff and have to deal with it because they have to try to balance the budget on the cost side more because their tax base, the economy isn't growing in a way that matches their cost structure. So what does this look like if we then forward in an under scenario, like, and so we're using kind of historical cost drivers to understand sort of what the world may look like in 10 years? And then we're also kind of modeling, I would say, a fairly, an experience in sort of economic growth that you probably have seen over the last 10 years. So, so imagine like the community continues to kind of grow at a fairly robust pace, but nothing outside of what you would expect going forward. And so what happens, right? For the most part, your revenues can kind of keep pace with your expenses, but overall you're running slight sort of deficits. And so you're having to eat into your reserves a little bit and your fund balances are dropping a little bit. And I'll just say, even though this feels like a negative picture, I would characterize this more as an optimistic one. This is pretty good performance when we can actually see you pushing out that fiscal cliff as much as possible. And this, you kind of fit into this, what I call a topology of the, of cities that are able to sort of kind of grow their way out of their cost challenges. Okay. But what happens if the economy doesn't grow as robustly, right? So what if we end, you know, just like hypothetically move into a period here where you're kind of looking at not recession level, but basically your 25th percentile growth that you've experienced instead of maybe your average growth. And what happens there, right, is the tax base itself doesn't grow enough to sort of generate the revenues, and this is really mostly a sales tax issue, to keep pace with your expenses. And then what you see is that fiscal cliff move forward in time. And this isn't like a forecast to say it's happening, but this helps you understand the relationship between the decisions and the cost structure relative to what's happening in the economy and your ability to raise taxes off of that. Okay. I'm going to pause here and just take any questions on sort of like quick snapshot of how we're thinking about the 2025 budget, the non-labor, labor expenses, and a little bit about our projection, just to make sure everybody's still tracking with me. I'm getting some nods and thumbs ups. Okay, great, great. I'm going to keep moving forward. Please just raise a hand or interrupt me and I'll stop. Okay. So last time I was here, I introduced this idea of a shadow deficit. And this is a phrase, an idea here that's really trying to sort of describe the challenge that I think a lot of small cities, and I would say growing cities like Tom Water have, where, you know, you're always trying to do more with less. You have a very fairly lean staff, particularly even, you know, an operating budget of about 50 million, that's really big. It sounds like really big, but it's in the broader scheme of things. It's probably puts you slightly less than median relative to other communities across the state. But this is a typical picture, right, where you have what we'll call your funded budget versus what kind of what maybe the full community may want or desire. And so what we've been trying to do here, right, is give you examples of what that might mean, right? Why would you have a shadow deficit? I mean, well, sometimes the state and the federal government says, well, now you got to do this, right? And so your planner who was, you know, doing the things that they need to do from a long range, planning perspective now has 10% more work they have to do, but they don't have 10% more revenue or 10% more FTEs, right? And so what happens is you're having to try to balance things, some things get deferred, investments aren't made, right? Because you're living within that sort of tax budget, but even though you know your, your desires for expenditures or your needs for expenditures are probably a little bit more. Okay. And I think that I stole this here from a slide that Troy has shown you in the past, just to give you some example, right? And I think here he's got some, some quick metrics of comparing the city in 2004 to 2024 with respect to sort of, you know, how many acres of parks versus employees were you, did you have, you know, permits, process versus employees. And what you see here is actually, it's good. I would expect those numbers to be declining because you would hope as the city grows, you get some efficiencies and economies of scale, but not always, right? There are always kind of these plateaus of points where you're like, you've exhausted the ability to kind of get those economies of scale and then you have to kind of bite off the next big chunk of capacity. You know, kind of like, you know, going from like a, you know, four cylinder car to a six cylinder car, right? You want to just, you need a little bit more horsepower. And so one more word on, on the shadow deficit, it sounds like a bad thing, but in some ways it's a good thing that as a community you have it, right? Because a lot of places that aren't growing have actual deficits, you know, with even just minimum or just essential services. And so part of here, I think of it as like an idea here, it's not to be sort of scary shadows, right, darkness, but it's really to just give you a sense that there is kind of what you have in your budget. And then there's another thing here. And I think this fits nicely in the conversation that you're going to have with your strategic planning and the budget process coming up. And so to help seed that, so how can we understand the city of Tom Waters' shadow deficit? We kind of asked departments to organize their spending into kind of three different buckets. And the first thing here, we're, we're talking about core or required services. So this has many of the essential services that you are required to provide by law, but not all of them. And so part of what we're trying to do here, and it's kind of fuzzy, we're not drawing sharp distinctions, but we asked them to say, like, given the community as it exists today, if you were really just trying to turn the lights on as a, as a service, what would you need to do, right? And some of that is probably mostly essential, but not necessarily all of it. Then we asked department heads to organize and identify additional spending to say, well, if we thought about the things that we needed in the past or past councils or the community desired to say like, hey, this is a level of service that a community of Tom Waters size and expectations would have, what would be those programs and services that would be, that would reflect that? So we asked them to identify sort of existing community commitments. And then lastly, we asked them to kind of say, well, given what you know as a professional in your field, what the council may have expressed as an interest in the past, either this one or past ones, what would you think is sort of an enhanced service that would, that you might, and what would it take to deliver those pieces? Okay. And so I'll say, you know, this, this isn't kind of like a, you know, fast and, you know, true sort of way to think about it, but the reason I bring it forward here is to give you some clarity, to provide transparency, help you with priority setting, and then tie it to sort of revenues. Because ultimately, this is the exercise that you will be engaged with in the budget side of it, right? Like, well, what should we, how many positions should we fund? If we want to prioritize this, is it, and we don't want to raise revenue, what do we need to sort of perhaps reprioritize or to sort of maybe sunset, right? So I think in organizing this this way, I think it's hopefully, hopefully you think about it, but you can think about it. I'm sure each one of you will have your own way you want to think about how you want to think about the city and its prioritization, priority for services. So, so I would say in putting this kind of three-tiered budget framework forward, it's kind of the way I like to think about it. But I think what I'm asking you all to do is also to start thinking about how you might want to think about organizing your own sort of framework for the budget. Okay. Okay. So I'm going to come back to this a little bit here because like I said, this isn't like uncommon, right? We see this repeated and I'll get into kind of some of these pieces in a little bit, but part of this is, right, we had a big property tax reform initiative, 747, right, that reframed how governments funded themselves primarily through the property tax. But then we've seen basically a lot of, we'll call it expansiveness as, as sales taxes, BNO taxes, utility taxes have really had to bear a larger burden to kind of compensate for that. And then here councils have a lot less discretion on raising revenue. So your council manicability in the property tax used to be pretty large, but with 747, that's been much more restricted. And so your ability to kind of do things without going to the voters, which one might argue was the intent of that law, is, is actually really come true. So, so being clear about sort of prioritizations and what commitments in the budgets are really important because much of what you're trying to accomplish will ultimately need to engage residents in your community. Okay. So here's a punchline. And so what we asked to do, we asked all those departments to organize themselves and identify what they would consider core, existing or enhanced. And so for reference, we're simply just talking about sort of general government funds. I articulated really the kind of the core piece of your main budget. And that's roughly about in 2025 budget terms is about $54 million. And you can kind of see on the far left, the rough distribution of that. And to no surprise, public safety, police and fire are a large portion of your budget and you see that there. So we then asked all those departments to organize core, existing and enhanced. And what we see, right, if we just think about the core piece, that shadow deficit is roughly about 13, 14 million dollars, right? Just between kind of, it's been, that's been there. When we go to existing, we add about another million or so, and then another million dollar, a million and a half dollars on the enhanced side of that. And the distribution of that sort of changes. To no surprise then, right, because of the two big departments in fire and police, right? And, you know, you see both transportation, engineering, public works and parks and rec, kind of your four big pillars of, of, of spending. That's where we see much of the sort of need for additional expenditures in order to deal with, in order to sort of deliver services that they feel like, one, the city needs to be delivering as well as those that the community may have expectations for. Okay. I'm going to pause and just make sure everybody appreciates this really quickly. And let me just say here, $13 million on a $53 million budget is a big number, feels like a big number, right? And I'll just say, that's not a number that just showed up overnight, right? This is something that's been cooking for decades, you know, because the reason that the shadow deficit exists for many growing communities is because Washington has been in this sort of, this sort of, I don't want to call it boom bust, but we have two, we've had two, maybe three big economic cycles during the era of the 1% property tax limitation. And everyone is going like, well, you know, the, the chickens are going to come home to roost eventually from 747. But then all of a sudden, the economy goes crazy in the aughts and/or in the teens and the growth in sales tax, business revenue, utility revenues really kind of hides that sort of structural problem. And then we have these big crashes like the great recession or COVID and governments have to, one, either implement some pretty strong austerity measures and cutbacks and pieces and/or, and/or maybe receive federal state assistance that kind of makes up for those, some of those gaps. And so what happens then, right, is basically you kind of ride high, you hide the problem, you crash down, you reset, you ride high again, and then you reset. And that's how over time you start adding on to this shadow deficit. So the point here is like, it's not like $13 million if between the budget and the core just showed up. That's been building as the community has kind of ridden these two to three sort of economic cycles over the last 20 years. All right. I'm going to then sort of just give you a little sort of finer tooth comparison here, like in terms of the original framework between labor and non-labor costs. No surprise, right? If we just think about the labor side, so that 36.2 million in 2025, roughly the majority of that growth, right, so of the total amount is actually in labor costs. So what we see here is that grows by another nine million between the budget or the 2025 budget and the core. And we compare that to the non-labor costs, sorry, and I'll just highlight, actually, most of that is in fire and police because that's where your large personnel costs are. But then when we flip over here to the non-labor side, what we see here is the big need here in mostly in, a little bit, sorry, a little bit in most of the departments, but a lot, the majority of it in transportation engineering because of the need to upgrade the city's infrastructure on the, on the capital side and maintain that over time. So, so I mentioned this a little bit here about sort of why we have it. And I would say, you know, the particulars in Tom Waters' case are probably different, but generally, right, the 1% levy cap pushes the cliff, right? And so either that comes sooner or later, depending how fast your economy is growing. The austerity measures during recessions, right, kind of really the big sort of driver and sort of, you know, kind of limiting government's ability to sort of grow with community need. And then the structural, you know, part of this here in the shadow deficit is cumulative. And so, but I would say, right, each community ultimately sets its own priorities, right? And, and this is, you know, depending on sort of every council, right? One says like, okay, are we going to just simply stay within existing resources and just prioritize internally, right? And to say like, okay, every year, this is how much we have, what are the most important things and those are the things we're going to do and these are the things we're not going to do. You know, some of, as a city though, many things you are required to do, so that kind of also limits your ability to kind of play in that space. Many communities have, to the extent they can, right, have used councilmatic tools. Most jurisdictions are out of bank capacity on their property tax, but utility taxes are typically the one place, particularly when governments control their own utilities, they have a little more leeway year to year to sort of leverage the utility taxes. But for the most part, what we see in these choices is for cities going to voters, whether that would be kind of one-time kind of fixes that do things in the budget with excess levies. But more specifically, we see them going to voters for levy lift lifts, whether it's to implement broad expansions in public safety or in parks and rec to sort of increase the capacity of the property tax to accomplish very specific community goals that ultimately voters will weigh in on. So to go back to that, the shadow deficit charge here, that can feel a bit sort of abstract without something a little more concrete. And so not to sort of pick on police, but just to give a much more concrete example because the department has done some very detailed strategic planning where they have done service planning and then understand how many officers they need to sort of meet those needs. And so what we're seeing here, based on that, is why the 20, what the 2025 budget looks like and what the core looks like. And what you see in the 2025 budget, right, we've got 47 current employees with the required sort of equipment and training that would go with many commissioned staff and you have a budget of roughly $11 million. By 2035, right, what you're, what the department is asking to do is try to move that 47 to 65 through mostly a mix of adding commissioned staff, but then some non-commissioned support staff as well. And so that's how we get from that 10.9 to that 14.3 within that department. We're adding 19 police officers, we're adding five front office, non-commissioned staff to support that activity. Likewise, if we then look at the fire department, we see a very similar piece, right? So the current budget, about $13 million, 62 current employees. In order to deliver those core services, they're looking to add, you know, in the range of seven staff members over the next 10 years just to meet those sort of existing needs. That's right, I'm looking at the existing piece, but in the core, we're looking at four additional staff, seven in the existing. And so a lot of the, that is. And so a lot of the, that is in hiring firefighters, but then also, right, there are some nonlabor parts to that as well, including fire engine replacement and remodeling. Okay. So what does this mean as we start thinking about the 27, 28 budget? Excuse me. And so I think the first thing to keep in mind here is that that shadow deficit that I showed, right, is cumulative, but it's also persistent and growing. So the community, as last I looked at the population, right, Tom Water is bigger today than it was yesterday, and it's likely to be bigger tomorrow than it is today. The community continues to be on a growth trajectory. There are challenges on the land use side, I know with the HCP and other types of things, but those feel like solvable problems, and Tom Water continues to be a very desirable place for residents and communities to locate.
I believe Councilmember Agave has a question.
Growth in 10 years, is that in keeping with population estimates?
No, that's not population. So I'll explain this. So what we see on this chart here is basically the 25 and 26 budget numbers. And then what we have here is, if you were to implement the core existing cumulative, so it's hiding behind the, sorry, the legend is hiding behind the council members online, but in the peach, it's the core, and the green is existing, and then it's enhanced. So just think of it as basically, how big would your spending be in 2030 and 2035 if you implemented those individuals? It doesn't have, well, how much more, how much is population growth driving that? In our conversations with the departments, it's a little, you know, it's not a perfect one-to-one, but generally, they're trying to size their needs to how big they think the city will be over the next 10 years. So it is some, mostly taking, trying to account for being a bigger city, but not necessarily one-to-one.
The reason why I ask that question is, I believe two days ago, I read in some kind of news source about a proposed or anticipated property increase in Thurston County. So now, if you look at all the data here in Tom Water, I know I've asked this question before, what is the number of unit housing that we've added in the past five or 10 years? You could take that number and extrapolate that on a continuum in terms of expected population growth. So if a housing unit within the past 10 years have not grown significantly, your 1% levy or cap stays the same because when you need more homes, which you collect revenue from in terms of property tax. So it seems to me that what you are talking about is chicken or the egg, which one comes first? And I don't know the answer to that question. So perhaps you, if you make the correlation between the number of the population growth within the next 10 years, I don't know what OFM is put there for Tom Water, and if you look at the number of homes within that particular same period, and the services that is provided within that same period, you should be able to make some correlation on what the expected growth would be. But at this point in time, it seems like your presentation hinges upon the fact that while there is going to be some growth, but our growth is going to be X, Y, and Z, but we just don't know what that is, but this is the number. And that number you're saying is certain, I'm not an economist, but I know something about statistics, but I don't know if your number is as certain as you, I mean, as you think it is.
Yeah. So I think I appreciate what you're saying, and I just want, I think the thing to keep in mind here is what Morgan is showing on this slide and on the past slides are the projected expenses. And the projected expenses are based on either what we currently are doing as core services, what we, they assume that we are continuing to do the same commitments that we've made for additional items. And then, and then the consideration of the enhanced items are the things that might be, that we might know to be coming down the pike that are added. All of those different projections assume the population growth that has been identified and described in the comprehensive plan. So, and so the projected growth is assuming we're funding the same types of things out into the future, but we are also accommodating or expecting that that growth is being incorporated into it as it's described and assigned through the Growth Management Act, through Office of Financial Management, and through Thurston County in terms of the population allocations. So population growth is identified in here. I think what's not shown here, Councilmember Agave, is these are just expenses, so we're not talking about what the revenues might be projected out. At this point, this is really just about what are the costs? How are we spending money at this point? Because we need to understand how we're spending money and how it compares to our revenue, for sure, which is what he showed in some of the earlier bar graphs. But this is just to understand, how are we spending our money? What are we spending it on so that we can understand in the future, as we have more limited resources because of this ongoing persistent shadow deficit, what do we need to, either, how are we going to cut expenses? How are we going to raise revenue? Or how are we going to do some combination of those things?
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think it's a great question and a great insight because, you know, how will the world shake out? Nobody really knows. And so the idea here is really just to help you understand, like, the departments think as the community grows over the next 10 years, you know, there is a sort of expectation and need to sort of meet those at different levels. And that's kind of why we're trying to show that spread. And the spread, you know, is tight, right, anywhere from about, you know, $3 million variance in any year, and these are average costs because we asked them to do it over 10 years. But so you can just kind of see generally how that compares to this year's budget numbers. Okay. Any other questions here before we kind of move on?
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Just a clarifying question. Morgan, can you tell me how many more slides you have?
Just a couple.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I won't belabor these pieces, but I think much like all your strategic planning and budget deliberations, right, what we have here is a tool and a set of ways to think about the challenges and questions that the community has and to kind of align values and priorities with spending in a way that I think hopefully will serve both this council and the community well. And not only can we do that from a budget, you know, kind of what does next year's budget look like, but we can run this forward in the future. And so we don't need to answer any of these questions right now, but to me, I think these are the ones that I feel like are lurking in my mind that would be helpful and grounding the work that you're doing on the strategic planning side, the work that we've done here with Lisa and Troy and the department leads, is trying to get some direction, feeling, guidance, advice on some of these questions, right? What feels urgent? You know, what commitments require the most near-term action, particularly in next year's budget? You know, how do you want to think about cervix expansion or consolidation? You know, what are the kind of the key, you know, principles around equity, efficiency, growth, risk, right, that you want to be thinking about in some of these budget scenarios? So I'm going to go back to the, the next slide, just leave it up here, but just in terms of kind of going forward, right, what we're really trying to do is say, we want to model your kind of scenarios, right? And one can think of it as like, oh, could we have a status quo where we don't do anything, right? We want that as a baseline, but what does it mean to kind of have commitment alignments and to expand or reprioritize or think about those sort of trade-offs, whether it's around staffing levels, capacity, you know, thinking about what happens to your general fund balance over time, as well as whether there are cost containment or revenue strategies that are important for this council to be surfacing and assessing. So with that, I'll end my, at least my slides, and take any other conversation, discussion or questions or advice that you have for us as we move into the next phase.
Any questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you. When can we have access to the Excel so we can play around with it?
We can do that at any time. We have a working model, so you can look at it today. One thing we needed to be able to do is give you ability to look at scenarios, so we have to do just a little work. So this is kind of where understanding how you want to think about it, we can design it in a way that you can kind of say, well, what does it mean if I add a police officer this year? What does it mean if I change the tax piece? You know, we'll need to do some customization, but at least as the status quo, that's available for.
Perfect. And then one thing else is future conversations, how does this play into labor negotiations?
Our provision of services and how we deliver those in terms of labor are, that's, yes.
They'll be able to use this tool to help, right? I think it should save some time and be more efficient and effective of where we're at as a city and what has been proposed with the labor, right?
Yes, it will be, it will be much easier to understand. We already do, as we're negotiating with our unions, we already do some, like, what happens if we do this, if it's this raise or this time off, that kind of thing. This will give us a little bit more efficient and effective tool, I think, to do that a little bit more quickly.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Swarthout?
I was going to ask the same thing, is if we could have a work session.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, so in terms of timing, the idea with the scenario tools is that likely in, I don't know that we'll get to it before the end of this year, but likely in the first quarter of 2026, we need to start budgeting in April of 2026. And so we need to have good direction and priority and conversation and understanding about what the council's priorities are so that we, in that first quarter of 2026, in order to be able to begin our budgeting process and really internalize all of this information and be able to think strategically, again, not just about the 27, 28 biennium, but longer-term impacts. How can we start chipping away at the shadow deficit that's been growing over the past several decades, which won't happen in one, in one biennial budget, but we can start making changes and developing strategies and approaches that can help us get to the point where we're lessening that shadow deficit.
I'll just add, because I think Councilmember Dahlhoff asked a good question. I talked a little bit about scenarios, but a step in between with working with most councils, there's a questions of just, I want to know how this works. What's the impact of this on our budget choice, right? It's not really like, oh, let's do, let's do this initiative and fund it this way. It's more like, I need to understand, like, the impact of going, whether it's on sort of, you know, labor agreements with bargaining units or something like that. So I would say, thinking about, what do you think of those kind of core drivers or questions where you understand, well, if, what happens if A, what, you know, if we do A, what happens with B? I think there's that intermediate step in there. So do kind of start cataloging those things, so that's helpful because we can design ways for you to understand that more explicitly in the model.
Thank you, Morgan.
All right, any other questions? So this is going to be very helpful, and I think a little bit more where we'll be able to really see it. Sometimes it's, when you get into this kind of complicated budget, it is really hard to comprehend at that level, what, what all those things are. So I think this will be an amazing tool for next year and the next, creating the next biennium budget and getting through this biennium budget too, so, because we don't know what's going to be happening in this biennium budget as we move forward. So, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmember Swarthout.
So with that, we are now moving to committee reports. And the first committee report is on Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Agave.
Thank you, Mayor. This is short and simple. So we had our Public Health and Safety Committee meeting last week, and we had two agenda items, and one was into local agreement within the school resource officers that we unanimously approved a while ago. And then we had a summary briefing from the executive department regarding the Tom Water Safe program. And in that briefing, there was what, how the program was formed, what took place, and going forward, what is going to happen. So stay tuned for very good stuff that is going to happen with our program. And that is my report.
Great, thank you. Next is General Government Committee, Councilmember Rothausser.
Thanks, Mayor. The General Government Committee met last Wednesday. There was just one item on our agenda, but it was an important one. It was our introduction to kind of the rest of the process that we'll be working through for the comprehensive plan. We aim to adopt the capital facilities portion of that before the end of the year. Unfortunately for me, I don't, we won't be able to adopt the comprehensive plan in its entirety until early 2026, so I won't be there to vote on it, but at that meeting, I did commit to come to the council meeting when that deliberation does take place, just to visit and see it through to its end. We'll have work sessions in the coming weeks and months, as well as joint work sessions with the Planning Commission to go over that rollout, as well as discuss the community outreach portions of that.
Great, thank you. Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout.
Well, thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, September 18th, at 8:00 a.m., we will be meeting, Public Works will be meeting, and we, we already given a heads up that it's going to be seriously a two-hour meeting. Yes, and Administrator Parks is, so we will be going over, I think the thing that will be taking the longest, it'll be the ordinance for the final docket for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan amendments. We also have a service provider agreement with SCJ Alliance for the Chutes Valley Trail, and a service provider agreement for the TCF Architecture for the City Operations and Maintenance Facility Amendment Number One. This will be a fun meeting. So 8 o'clock on Thursday, guys.
Great. Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting on September 26, and we will have the next monthly financial update. And then we will also be reviewing the cloud contract amendment with Tyler Technologies. So as everyone knows, when we committees do their work, it ends up coming to work sessions and council meetings for adoption. Now we will move into the Mayor's City Administrator Report, and we will start out with City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. So Melody is going to put something up on the screen for me that I'm, I hope you'll find it exciting. As she's doing that, it's there, so I'll go here and I'll answer Councilmember Dahlhoff's question at the end, if that's okay. So this is an interactive map. It's called the Tom Water Development Projects Map. And if you go to our homepage, under the News and Action section, just scroll down a little bit on the homepage and look to the right, this interactive map will, is accessible. So the nice thing about this map is this will allow people or council members or the public to go in and see what the development activity is that's happening currently in the city of Tom Water. So if you, you can zoom in on it, the gray bluish squares are private development projects. You can hover over a square, it tells you a little bit about that, about that particular project. If you have more questions about that, you can call into the Planning Department. The red projects, the red triangles, those are public sector projects, so those are things that, that we are working on for the most part. So kudos to the GIS team, TED, Community Development and the Communications Team, they all partnered on this, and I think that's a really great, really great tool. Just so you know also, the fall Parks and Recreation information is out. It's a busy time in the fall. The program, again, if you go to the homepage, in the banner, it shows up, I think it's the second button. There's classes that are available, whether it's sports or arts or babysitting or STEM or music. We offer a lot of programming here at the city of Tom Water. Tomorrow at the, tomorrow afternoon, beginning at 3 o'clock, City Hall, Old Town Center, and the Parks and Recreation Office out in their new location are going to be closed. Tomorrow is our employee recognition event from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. for council members. We're holding that at the Capital Events Center, which is the EST 113 building behind Costco just off of Tai E. just off of Tai E. We had gotten some input from staff last year, so we adjusted the format a little bit. So, we're doing an afternoon instead of a morning. We're still doing food because that's important. And we also got some feedback and wanted to respond and be respectful of that, that it's like, this is a particular to employee appreciation. It's not really about combining it with a holiday event. So, kudos to the HR team for helping us put that together. There's going to be a taco bar, slideshow, raffles, games, and of course, our Years of Service Recognition Event. So, this Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00 in the Fire Department Training Room at T1, this is our last Saturday session related to the strategic plan. Our wonderful facilitator, Amy Leniker, is going to be there again. The focus on this one is actually developing agreements among the council about the implementation framework for the strategic plan. What are the steps and the associated timelines for operationalizing the council's goals and priorities that are contained in the strategic plan and helping us move forward with that work? And then, September 23rd, next week, is our work session. There's two items on the, the agenda. We're going to look at a modified process for prioritizing the action items and our different focus areas that are in the, excuse me, in the strategic plan, based on the input from last work session. We've drastically reduced the number of questions. We're going to be focusing those on legislative and policy issues for the council to work through and to help guide your discussion around the different action items and the focus areas. So, hopefully, that'll go much more quickly than last Tuesdays. But also importantly, the folks from BRS, Barker, Rinker, SeaCat, I'm, I'm never positive that the three words are the, I'm saying them properly. Thank you. BRS. BRS is going to be here at City Hall next Tuesday to talk, bring in additional information back to the council about our community center design. In order to really move forward with any further analysis or design work, we need two pieces of, not specifically a decision, but some guidance from council. They have some revised programming that they would like to show you about, like, what would happen, the, the building and the different spaces. They want to present to you, like, a schedule that says, here's what a day in the life of this community center might look like in terms of how the various spaces are used by different groups, timing, that type of thing. And they want to make sure that they've made some adjustments to how and what types of spaces they're looking at, and we want to make sure we're on track with councils to get some head nodding. The, the second thing that we really need to understand is, we need to begin to understand a preference for what location. So, they're going to bring back to you some information about various locations for locating the community center. The goal is really to have the council have a good interactive section with them, ask lots of questions, and help give them some, some direction on those two topics in particular. So, as a reminder, our work sessions are now housed here in chambers instead of over in the very small EOC room in, in the Fire Department. So, the consultants and staff will be actually here in the, in the council chambers. So, if you're able to make it in person, that would be great. But we will definitely look forward to a fun, interactive conversation around the community center. And then, the last thing, Councilmember Dahlhoff had a question about the timing on the Trails and Park Service Provider Agreement, and particularly how that interacted with the roundabout on 79th and Old 99. And oh, by the way, that also is impacted by the Public Works Facility. So, generally speaking, the design for the Trails and Park, the, the contract itself was amended to go through 2027. The design work is actually anticipated to be done in 2026. And so, we would expect to hopefully be building that park facility in 2027, all things being equal. The roundabout is dependent almost entirely on ensuring that we get through a process of the Federal Aviation Administration agreeing to our proposal. And that requires that we do some analysis in terms of, here are the other alternatives and, and, and explaining and justifying why our proposal is the one that works the best, and then working through some right-of-way and easement processes with both the Port of Olympia and, and ultimately with the FAA. So, we are hopeful that that project will also go out to construction in '27, '28, but that is entirely dependent on the work with the FAA. We're hopeful and feel like we're working well with the Port of Olympia, and we're getting them on board to be our advocate with, with, with the FAA. Yes, you're welcome. And that's all I have.
Great. So, part of my report is that I haven't had any committee meetings since then. I believe as possible, I might be substituting for Councilmember Von Holtz at InterCity Transit, possibly. We will be discussing that. And then, I, for the, we will be having a EDC meeting later this month. So, I don't have any of those others to do. And I just wanted to remind everyone that Fall Fest is in a week and a half. It's on September 27th. That is a really a great event. It's in Tom Water Falls Park. And so, I really look forward, that's kind of, you know, it's, it's a really fun event, but it kind of just wraps up that whole festival event season. So, I really would like everybody to come out. And then, if people have been looking at our great communications staff putting out publications on that, InterCity Transit will be helping with some of the shuttle service as far as doing Bus Route 13 and where's people may be able to park because of parking there is somewhat limited. So, want to welcome everyone to that. With that, I will then move to council member reports, and I believe I will start with Councilmember Swarthout first.
Thank you. So, I had one meeting on September 5th, was the Thurston Regional Planning Council, and we had a very full agenda. We had a number of items, but the most important thing we discussed were the high-capacity transportation update and the policy statement. We also came up with a subcommittee for the 2026 Work Program, and we are working on the 2026 legislative priorities. And our biggest thing we are also working on is our Executive Director Recruitment, and so, replacing Mark Daly. Our October 3rd meeting will be really entirely directed towards interviewing, because they're in the process of getting candidates, and then we'll hopefully will have some candidates to interview in October. It's quite a, quite a lot of things going on with the TRPCs.
Great. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Noting the time and that, I'm losing my voice, had TCOM, and knowing how far technology has come with the software updates for your radios, you could just, like, drive to a location and it updates, which feels like really sci-fi to me. But knowing that, that helps increase the efficiency and effectiveness of police and fire and their software updates. So, I think that was a cool reminder, like, that's where we're at today. Also, Thurston County Opiate Response Task Force 2024, they diverted almost 8,000 pounds of pharmaceutical waste from going into the landfill. And so, I think that's something to celebrate because Tom Water contributes to that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Agave.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on September 10th, I attended the TRPB Board Meeting. It was a very full agenda, and I'm just going to go off my calendar to talk about the most important item that we talked about. So, we discussed the Regional Transportation Improvement Plan, the ROT, and then we discussed the original draft transportation improvement program. And then, we discussed the Transportation Policy Board Business and Community and Business Representative Reappointment and Appointment for of 2025 Recruitment Subcommittee. And for this particular item, we wanted to reappoint those that were already in those positions. And then, we talked about the Federal Transit Asset Management Performance Measure Target, and that was based upon recommendation by staff. And then, the most important of all was orientation of an artist drawing of what Martinway Crossing would look like when they, when construction finally began. So, for that, I don't remember the details, but the drawing does look very, very futuristic in the sense that in the median of the road, it's sort of put a median that has trees, and then that is put there to cause traffic to slow down because there's going to be a bike lane on one side and on the other side. And then, there, I don't know what you call them in engineering, where you kind of bunch up the road so that you kind of slow down. You don't go to fight because of the bike and the, and the, or the pedestrian that are using the, the walkways. So, that was a part of our TRPB meeting on September 10th, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Von Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow evening, I will be attending InterCity Transit, and it's our joint meeting with the Community Advisory Council. So, it should be a good meeting. And then, yes, October 1st, if you could cover for me, because I will be on a plane coming back from Ireland, so I won't be...
Great. All right. We'll go now to Councilmember Jefferson.
I attended the T-Hopes meeting on the 11th of September. The meeting focused on upcoming events and community activities. Our Josh highlighted Tom Water's Parks and Recreation Events, and we discussed cleanup event on October 4th, and also possibly hosting a Narcan training session, and the possibility of a Guiding Good Choices parenting session in February. Our next meeting is October 9th. And on the 9th of September, I attended the Experience Olympia and Beyond Executive Board Search Meeting for the new director. The meeting focused on refining the search process. The company doing the search outlined the initial two-steps interview process, includes Zoom meetings and in-person visits with three finalists. So, basically, they're just, everything is out in the open, and how are we going to hire this new director to make sure that we make the right choice? And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say that I attended the General Government Committee with Councilmember Althouser, and you need to know that Brad not only invited him to come back to the meeting where we're going to have our big celebration of the completion of our huge project, but he told him that he could speak. So, I just want you to be aware of that possibility, that, that that could happen. So, it may not be just goodbye at the end of the year, right, Michael? You're going to come back and give us some words.
Well, he said I could speak at public comment, but pretty much anybody can.
Oh, golly. Let's see. I had the Solid Waste Advisory Council meeting, and also, the ORCA meeting for this month was, was a month, our month, one of our months off. So, I don't have a whole lot of, of things that would excite people after the end of this long meeting. That's my report.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. The Regional Housing Council has not met, but we are meeting a week from tomorrow. We were planning on meeting this coming Friday to go over our strategic plan for the future, which Councilmember Kathy gracefully, and I'm grateful for her agreeing to sort of cover that meeting, but that meeting still been canceled. And we are instead going to be working on that at our regular meeting this upcoming Wednesday, as well as the following month. So, I appreciate her willingness to, to cover for me, and it turns out it's not quite necessary. So, at our next council meeting, I'll have a full report out about the ongoings of, of our meeting next week. And then, the S-uary group has, has not met since our last meeting either. That's my report.
Great. Thank you.
The fact that I don't have to go to that meeting all by myself without Michael tells me that prayer still works.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah.
So, with no other business this evening, I, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.